I will go ahead, make sure this is screwed down. Call meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call. McKee here, Lanterman.
Here.
Pedrick?
Present.
Barrickham?
Here.
Counselor Nicholas is, I think, out of town this week. And we are good there. If you'd like to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda approval. So we had item six J added. Does any staff have anything else?
That's the only thing, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number twenty twenty five seven four is on the dais real.
Perfect. Anything in council? And I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. I think that was Barrickham.
Whatever you want to do.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alrighty, no presentations today. Onto open forum. And Jay will walk us through for items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Yeah, so anybody who's here, if they have something they'd like to speak on that's not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone. I have one card. Please address it to the council. The council will not engage at the time. They will listen and consider for future action. And you have five minutes to speak. Do you have any other questions? I have one card, Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Jay DeCamp.
Perfect.
Hello, my name is Jay DeCamp. I'm here representing some residents.
We get your address for the record.
Name and address. Yes, sorry about that.
Okay, name is Jay DeCamp. Address is nine 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 eight Jack Pine Lane. That's in Corcoran, Minnesota.
Perfect.
Okay, name and address is Jay DeCamp. I'm here representing some of the residents in the Bellwether neighborhood. Corcoran passed their policy in twenty twenty five requiring builders to complete escrow work within six days from closing, causing major issues with homeowners that closed their homes in twenty twenty four. The result is escrow can pull the homes built and homes built in twenty twenty four are not being completed in a timely manner. Corcoran's new sixty day policy is allowing Pulte to delay escrow work at homes built in twenty twenty four. Currently, there are thirteen homes just on my street alone that fall into this pre twenty twenty five policy. There's no incentive for Pulte to complete housework at homes that closed in twenty twenty four. We get emails, updates from Pulte from time to time, and push back the timeline for escrow to be completed. Today, we received an email pushing back again the escrow some sixty days due to rain amounts. My homes that closed recently had the escrow done in the rain. Pulte's tile company sent letters to homeowners asking to extend escrow to another hundred and twenty days. Frustrating to see homes that closed last week getting their yards completed and homes that closed over a year ago still don't have any final grade sprinklers or sod. And I just want to show you, this is kind of one of the better homes that you see out there. These are very expensive homes, and that's what it looks like out there. Very discouraging. Unfinished escrow delays homeowners completing projects like decks or patios because they can't do it until final grade is done. Can the city of Corcoran help us, the newest citizens, hold large corporations like Pulte to their obligations? Just suggestions that would help us relax the new policy for new bills to allow Pulte to complete the final grade and saw to all work completed in homes that were built in twenty twenty four. Basically, putting a pause on that policy until they get caught up on homes that were built over a year ago. I also would be nice to enforce the city ordinance by mowing weed yards. I mean, some of the weeds are three or four feet tall, some of the homes up there. For homes closed in twenty twenty four, allow residents to build their porches and decks regardless of when Pulte completes some of their escrow work. And lastly, which I think will be most effective, is temporarily issuing building permits for Pulte in the city of Corcoran, then they are caught up in twenty twenty four escrows. What can Corcoran do for us, Mr. New Citizens? Thank you very much for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeCamp, can I please get your email address on the back of the card?
Sure.
Sir, could I ask you, what are you asking for? You're asking for, the last one was to cease issuing permits to Pulte until they're caught up?
We're asking for help, anything you can do. Some of the suggestions we had is like, maybe, the probably most logical one is to delay their sixty day policy for closing escrow accounts on homes that just recently built. Maybe relax that for Pulte until they get caught up on how homes they built last year. I know right now they're building, so basically the policy they're telling me is that homes that closed in the last sixty days got to have their escrow done within sixty days. So basically, a home that was completed last week has already got their final grade, it's already got the sod, it's got the sprinklers. Or next door, house that was completed last year is sitting there with this.
Yep, yep, I hear you.
So we're asking for some help either by postponing the policy for them so they get caught up twenty twenty four, or worst case, maybe they're going to get caught up, they're building houses so fast they can't finish escrow stuff. Maybe put a hold on it until they get caught up. There's an incentive there for them to complete it. They just don't have the incentive not because there's no key in the rules. There's no city inspectors go out there. There is no one coming in there looking at the yards, and there's no one following up on escrow. We're all there by ourselves. This big corporation keeps saying, well, we'll get it next year, next year. Some homes were built over eighteen months ago, still have nothing done to them. I'm just asking for some kind of help. Those are the suggestions I had. You may have other suggestions of people infected, but I just, we need help make them Pulte hold their obligations. I mean, it's the city of Corcoran, we love the city and all that, but we're getting a bad case from us because a house is like this. That's a million dollar house right there. Isn't that crazy?
Appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if I can get your email address. And for council's awareness, we're aware of the problem. Part of the reason the policy came into the scene for everyone's awareness is because this has been a problem throughout this development. And so we had to create a solution in order to try and solve the problem. Unfortunately, this is a second order effect of that. So we'll look at what we can do to help. But there's also some market realities, is that there's a limited amount of sod. And so they can't do that because we have worked with them and talked with them. And with the materials that they have, it's not just them, some of the other developers also are having just the reality there's so much happening. Sod is not as available for a lot of different reasons. I don't understand all those. But we will continue to talk. And I'll loop back with you and follow.
We appreciate anything you can do, even if they move forward to prepare for the sod. Right now, if the sod came worth two weeks' worth of housing, you can get it ready for sod. I mean, there's no water lines in there, there's no, nothing.
And other homes are getting sod.
There's sod out there.
The ones that are supposed to be completed within sixty days, they're getting sod and they're getting completed. But the twenty four homes that closed are not.
Some of the sod came in last week and they were putting on new homes that just closed. Well, it's not even just the sod issue.
If we're going to have a continued conversation, have you come out?
Yeah.
Just give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I did an email.
So it's not even...
Could you please state your name and address for the record?
It was a terrible address, ten thousand nine Jack Pine Lane, the same community as the rest of our country. So it's not just the sod issue. They have delayed the whole grading point. They're just starting to degrading now that they could have done last fall and did not. They have, they just got the water line in partially. And they haven't started beginning the landscaping. And so there's a lot of steps they could be doing prior to actually putting sod down that they have to do in a huge place. And even if there were a sod issue, which doesn't appear to be the case because they're putting down sod, as we mentioned, on homes that are under the policy currently. Again, we'll get to it. Okay. And some of us kind of withheld greater escrow, and others, frankly, Pulte is such a large corporation, I don't think it matters to them whether they get the escrow or not, when they get the escrow. So for some of the problems, Jay's point, we're just kind of, I mean, we have, you are potentially our only resort to actually get some recourse out of a billion dollar company that is less than intent on doing that.
The reason the policy exists was we have heard concerns about that before and we are proactively trying to support residents with their concerns. This was an unintended consequence and we'll look at it.
Totally understand that. We recognize that, you know, they weren't doing their gig. So you don't know what to make of it. All I want to say is kind of, prior to that, to the additions and all, yeah.
We'll take a look at it and I'll close the loop with him.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Jay, if I could.
Sure.
What policy is this that included twenty twenty five homes but not twenty twenty four homes?
I don't think it was written like that. I think that's how it looks like it's being applied.
So it went into action on January first, twenty twenty five. We don't have a look back ability. It's when we enact a policy, it's looking forward. And so the policy that we created became, came into effect on January first, twenty twenty five. And that's been the consequence of it.
And it was, if I may, Mr. Mayor, it was related to Pulte overall for abandoning behind Jeremy. So, I mean, same thing.
Yep, and you're not just Pulte, but when our had faces, has faces that have been decades.
Going forward, we can hold their feet to the fire, but right now it's kind of hard.
We'll talk at the DRC on Wednesday and we'll communicate with residents on what we're able to do. Staff is aware of it. We were just talking about this on Wednesday, what we can do. And we've been talking.
The specific change, I think, that Councilman Lanterman was asking about is an escrow tied to the building permit. So that was the action that started January first, is start taking escrow specific to individual building permits.
Okay.
So that's the change, so just...
Thank you. Is there anything preventing this council from amending that policy to include homes from twenty twenty four?
I'd have to have staff do some more analysis and we'd also want our attorney to weigh in on that. At this time, I can't answer that question.
Okay, all right, thank you. And since it sounds like they're having troubles obtaining certain materials, I assume that they would have no issues if this council voted to cease the issuance of future building permits, correct?
I can't speak to that either. I'd have to talk with staff because the second and third order effects of that would be significant. John, do you have any thoughts on that?
Mayor, I guess, correct me if I'm wrong, once, to start, we're talking about the housing escrow ordinance, correct? That it was an ordinance, was it not?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so the, and so the effect of that, obviously, going forward. So as far as your previous question, as far as retroactive applicability, being tied to the building permit, it would be difficult to do that now. As far as conditioning future approvals, it would really depend on the, like, the development agreement. And so if there are specific requests related to that, there may be some authority we can pull on there. But I think that's got to be part of what we look into is exhausting all options for what we have at our disposal.
Yeah, I understand that, you know, we can't go back and change the rules retroactively. But moving forward, I would, I would like to see us cease issuing building permits until they do get caught up.
We can definitely look at that as an option, but there are some potential legal implications that we want to make sure we don't put ourselves in a, in a position that we don't have the authority to put ourselves in. We can answer that right now from the dais.
And that's probably two ways to look at it, or two areas to look at it in terms of future developments that don't have a development agreement yet and maybe language we want to include. And looking, like you said, John, at the development agreement for, for Bellwether or for whatever development that has having the same issue and seeing what we can do within that.
Well said, Mr. Mayor. I would say that that's been one way, that the lens through which you view this would be, if your authority is linked exclusively to the building permit, you probably don't have a lot of option to do that. If you have, under some other agreement, there may be, we have to look into the individual agreement.
You need some time.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we have no other calls, emails, or cards.
Alrighty, then we will move on to, let's see here, consent agenda. Items six A through six J, which was added. Does anyone want to pull anything? Going once, going twice, so...
Motion to approve consent.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Moving right along, we have no planning business tonight, no unfinished business. Onto new business, we have nine A, the twenty twenty four audit update.
I'd like to invite Ryan Schmidt from Schlender, Wetter &amp; Company, who conducted our audit. Before he speaks, Mayor and Council, I would just like to say how proud I am of our team. If you recall, when I started in December, we had a twenty twenty two audit that wasn't complete, twenty twenty three audit that hadn't happened. And we had some significant things to fix. And I'm super proud of the hard work that everybody has done. The work on the escrow has been remarkable in order to fix that. The work in our accounts payable read has done a fantastic job all across the board. To the point that what Ryan's going to talk with you about is the minor findings that they found were frankly either out of our control or something that we've already resolved. And so we have a clean opinion, which is not where we were a year ago. And I'm super proud of our team.
Well done, you guys.
Can we be part of the rodeo?
This, this mayor, if I may. Y'all ain't got to sit through this.
Of course.
But if you're leaving, if you're leaving, I better see you in the rodeo after I leave.
I'm getting a hamburger.
And a good burger and dog and everything. Thanks for stopping.
Thanks for coming. You know, when I saw the crowd, I really thought through it.
He lied to me.
I can, I can make them stay if you want.
This is a rodeo.
You got three minutes.
You can assume we've read this.
Yep, yep, all right, well, you know, Jay really, he's still like under your...
He does that a lot.
Yeah, and basically what I was going to say is that things went really well. But I'll go through the presentation here, which I passed out. I also passed out the full audit of financials, the large reports. But we'll walk through the presentation and feel free to interrupt me and, you know, ask questions as we go. Yeah, so the first page here, I always like to start out with just a quick recap of, you know, what is the audit process and what's the purpose of the audit? So in a nutshell, really high level, an audit essentially consists of us reviewing your financial records from throughout the past year and really drilling down at that transaction level detail and looking at the supporting documentation for transactions that are in your accounting system. So invoices, bank statements, reports from the state, et cetera. That combined with various analytics, inquiries, other procedures, allows us to express an opinion on whether or not we feel your financials are accurate. The opinion that we've given you this year is what's called unmodified opinion, which is a clean opinion. Next page. This is basically where we just have to tell you how the audit went. So yes, you got that clean opinion, but did we see anything unusual? Did we have any difficulty getting the information we needed, so on and so forth? And I would say that the audit went very smoothly. In fact, it went more smoothly than I maybe expected it to at the front end just with being our first year auditing the city and there always been more work in that first year getting to know the city. And also, you know, there were findings last year and I anticipated having to dive into a few of those things this year. Things went very well and you'll see in the next two pages here that those things were cleaned up. So as part of the audit process, you know, we don't just look at the numbers. We also look at the processes and procedures that are behind the numbers. So we look at what kind of controls you have in place. And then we oftentimes have internal control related findings to report. So the two items that I have bullet points on this page, first one is audit adjustments. So many of the audits, I would say most of the audits we work on, end up having a finding of some sort in their report for material audit adjustments. And this is a finding that you had last year. And what this means is that during the audit process, if we find errors, we help make corrections, we make adjustments to fix things and clean things up so that we can still give that clean opinion. Well, this year, we actually did not have any significant audit adjustments. The numbers were already clean and things were already accurate by the time we started the audit. So we were able to get rid of that. And then the next item on there, you know, when we first started the audit, we looked at last year's report and, you know, there were findings for segregation duties and some bank rec issues and escrows and the material audit adjustments. You know, during the audit, we went through each one of those areas this year and every single one was fixed and cleaned up. So we actually didn't have any internal control related findings in the report this year. We also review your compliance with Minnesota statutes during the audit. So the state gives us checklists related to each one of the areas listed out here. And the only item that we ran across this year is actually what I consider to be a pretty minor thing that happens from time to time. The banks, the balance that you have in deposits, the bank increased. And as a result, it increased to the point where it was above and beyond the collateral that you had assigned. There's a statutory requirement to secure your deposits with collateral. And when those balances rise above and beyond that collateral, then technically you have a compliance violation there. Now, this was a simple fix and it's already been resolved. Contacted the bank after year end, informed them of the issue. They assigned some more collateral and you're back in compliance. Next page, this is a new thing this year. Whenever you receive federal funding that's over seven hundred and fifty thousand, there's what's called a single audit that needs to be performed. Which is a little ironic because it's actually kind of like having a secondary audit in addition to the normal audit. But basically, this is an extra audit of your compliance with that federal program. And this relates to the HUD funding that you received for the water fund trunk infrastructure project. So we had to review your compliance with the federal program, essentially make sure that you did the proper reporting, spent enough things you needed to, so on and so forth. And we had a clean opinion on compliance, a clean opinion on what you reported for federal expenditures. And then we did have one internal control related item here, which I would say is one that we almost always run into when we have a city that doesn't oftentimes get recurring federal awards. And then you get this federal award that pushes you over the threshold to complete this audit. And then you, you know, you didn't realize that you needed written policies in place to govern various things, like how do you assess what costs are allowable under the federal grant and how you handle conflicts of interest and procurement, et cetera. So my understanding is that this policy in written terms has already been adopted last month. So you're back in compliance with this as well. All right, with that, we'll get into the numbers a little bit here. Really big picture, just looking at the general fund for starters. Trend analysis here, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, and then also the budget thrown on there as well. And just from a really high level, you can see revenues exceeded budgeted amounts by about five hundred and forty two thousand. And expenditures also exceeded budgeted amounts by about six hundred and forty thousand. So overall, you had budgeted to essentially break even for the year. And your actual results were very close to that. You had an increase of about fifty five thousand dollars in fund balance for the year. Now, the next two pages take those same revenues and expenditures from the general fund. We just break it down into a little bit greater detail. The revenues page here, not a whole lot to talk about. Each one of these categories is pretty close to a bunch of property taxes. Of course, the largest category, right on budget there. And then licenses and permits was the biggest budgetary deviation. There you had about three hundred and sixty five thousand dollars more than revenue, or more than budgeted revenue, just for building permits and franchise fees. Next page, same layout, looking at expenditures broken down into smaller categories. I'll talk about the first three real quick, just because those are the larger categories. The general government, you were over budget here about six hundred and eighty thousand. Various items related to this, professional services, software supplies, other miscellaneous expenses. Next category here, public safety, here you were over budgeted about a hundred and twenty six thousand. Police and fighter were actually both under budget. It was the building inspection costs which pushed you over budget here, which makes sense based on the additional revenues we set on the previous budget. And then public works, here you were under budget about two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And then the next page here, we have your fund balance at the end of the year. This is the unassigned portion of your general fund balance. And we have this turned into a ratio, which is a very common way of gate of January, your average fund balance. So we have your unassigned fund balance here as a percentage of your annual budgeted expenditures. You actually have a policy in place to have about five months' worth of expenditures in your fund balance at the end of the year as a floor, as a minimum. You can see that you're at about forty five percent versus that policy being more forty two percent. So it's held steady in recent years and you're in a pretty good spot. With that, we'll move away from the general fund and just talk quickly about some of the other major funds, the funds that are, have a little more activity, a little bit more going on. Park capital fund, here revenues about a million a year, mostly park certification fees. Expenditures, three hundred and thirty five thousand. And overall, an increase in your fund balance for the year of about seven hundred and sixty six thousand. The city center drive fund, here you had bond proceeds in the prior year in twenty twenty three and not much for revenues of twenty twenty four. You just had continued expenses for that project. Actually, to the point where you had a deficit at the end of the year and that fund balance above two point nine, just about three million dollars to deficit. On the next page here, you can see the cash trend in both of those funds. And you can see the park capital fund increased steadily up to about five point two eight million over the past couple of years. And that city center drive fund cash balance there is all about negative one point seven million, which is currently at the end of twenty twenty four, is being borrowed from the general fund. Now, do we have some amounts that are due from the state, from municipal state aid, which was serving to eventually reinforce the... And next page, move away from those. The debt service fund, very standard activity here, taxes and assessments for your revenues, debt service, principal and interest payments for expenditures. Slight increase in fund balance there for the year. And then your non-major funds, in aid or debt, a decrease there of about seven hundred and forty six thousand. There is full detail on each individual fund in the back of the financials. And then the cash for the past three years in both of those categories. All right, we'll look at your proprietary funds here quick. Your water fund, for starters, the graph at the top is focusing just on operating revenues and expenses over the past three years. And then there's a little more detail down on the bottom. But looking at operations, operating revenues increased about a hundred and eighty five thousand. Operating expenses increased by a hundred and seventy six thousand. And then there was quite a bit of non-operating activity, as you can see down in the table at the bottom this year. So the non-operating revenues increased quite a bit. And about three million of this is that HUD grant that I was talking about. We recognize the revenues from that already. Even though I didn't actually, you didn't actually receive that until after year ended twenty twenty five, that you accrued the revenues to match your project expenses in the past four years. Aside from that, connection fees, investment income, overall an increase in net position there of about four point eight million. Next page, sewer fund, same layout. Operating revenues here increased about a hundred and thirty five thousand versus operating expenses actually dropped off about seventy two thousand. Overall, an increase in net position here of a little over a million. There about a million dollars of connection fees included in non-operating category there. And then the next page, it shows the cash in both of those funds over the past few years here. You can see the sewer fund has been on a bit of a steady rise there. And then the water fund, well, back in twenty twenty three, you had bond issuance. Cash came in from that and shot up and then dropped off this year as you had significant capital outlay, projects ongoing on the water fund. That's why we have the cash now, it's going back out. All right, with that, we'll move away from the individual funds and just look at things, really big picture here, citywide with everything wrapped together. So this now includes not only current assets, but also your capital assets. And then the next page here, we have a page for liabilities, which includes non-term, long-term liabilities, et cetera. Capital assets, just a slight increase here, mostly converting that cash into long-term infrastructure. And then on the liabilities page here, just a slight decrease in liabilities as you're making principal payments on your debt. And then this page shows those same assets and liabilities. And then the green is the net between the two. So you can see the assets and liabilities kind of trend together a bit. And then on a net basis, you kind of produce a certain increase in the past couple of years. And then on a net basis, you've got a pretty steady increase in the past couple of years. And then I just have two final slides in here for informational purposes. Essentially, this is, this is long-term debt. This is not the balance that's outstanding, but this is the payment that is due each year until the debt is paid off, based on debt that was outstanding at the end of the year. So this first page here is your governmental activities debt. This is the debt that's being financed primarily by property taxes and assessments. And then the next page is your business-type activities. The vast majority of this is your water fund, so debt that's being financed by the water fund. That's a lot of information very quickly, but does anybody have any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you. Well done. Congrats, everybody. Good work.
Alrighty, we don't need any motion or anything on that, right, Jay?
That's correct.
All right. Then we'll go on to nine B, which is the public works on-call policy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Included in the packet is a draft form of an on-call policy that staff is recommending for that council consider tonight and approve. With the addition of the new critical infrastructure and recent organizational adjustments into comping class, it is necessary to implement an on-call policy in public works. We, consistent with previously adopted council philosophy, the average compensation of our seven comparable cities was used to evaluate the program and policy in front of you. And I did want to note that of the other seven comparable cities, all of them had standby policy, which is really the biggest adjustment. All of the other cities had standby policy, we did not. So it's a pretty big gap that we're trying to fill with this policy recommendation. I do have, I kind of pulled out some of the data here for the standby to just show you ranges and means. If you have any specific question, I'd be happy to dive into that. I did want to note that we will be tracking all of our on-calls. There's actually one tonight, I believe, I go through. So it's, you know, we're growing up as a city with all the infrastructure, so it's a real deal that we have coverage twenty-four hours a day. And we're going to be tracking that and monitoring our program, but we do anticipate those needs and those demands to grow. Go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. So I see, you know, it says weekdays, Monday through Friday, one hour. Weekends, Saturday, Sunday, three hours. These are minimums, right?
No, well, just to clarify that, so there's a couple elements, I'll step back. So in the on-call policy, there's standby pay, which is, which is essentially what we call holding the phone, right? So you're on-call, that first point of contact comes through you. That rotates through non-exempt employees in this policy. So basically, the compensation you get for being the standby person is what's outlined there. So Monday, weekdays, Monday through Friday, they would get the equivalent. If I made forty dollars an hour, they would get forty dollars, their base salary is, it'd be one hour times your base salary, they would get to just hold the phone. Then there's callback, there's verbiage, and their callback means once there's an action, once there's an event or whatever, a call, then some of those milestones kick in, right? So if you're on-call, you get a minimum of two hours. If it's a three-hour event, you get that. If it's one hour, you get the minimum of two.
Okay, so if it's a, if it's a callback, there's a minimum, right? So if someone is called back for thirty minutes on a, on a Saturday night, what, what's the multiple?
So let's just, in that example, sometimes you do hypothetical, right? So in that example, an individual's on-call, so he's forty dollars an hour. Because it's a Saturday night, they're already getting paid a hundred and twenty dollars just to hold the phone on Saturday, right? Three hours, three, three times forty. If they get a call, now they're in callback pay mode, right? So callback pay, they're there for thirty minutes. They would get two hours, time and a half, two hours, time and a half. So another hundred and twenty for that specific event, so does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, it does. Thank you.
And I, you know, just proposing the next pay period would be effective July nineteenth. In terms of paying for it, there's kind of two primary components. There's utilities and there's operations, which is streets and parks and stuff. So we would propose basically prorating that and tracking it so they'd be paid out of sewer and water fund. For those, we anticipate approximately twenty-five thousand dollars to cover each of those divisions per year. That's based on an average, you know, average employee, right? Because it's based on hours, just based on their base pay, so it can vary by individual. And then the other twenty-five thousand dollars is out of the general fund for the operations that we are budgeting. So we're going to defer, we have one vacant seat for maintenance worker. We're going to defer that to the fourth quarter to cover twenty twenty-five, and then we'll make a budget adjustment in twenty-six to cover this. So with that, I'd be happy to dig into any more further questions. Just wanted to go through it at a high level.
Yeah, I, I guess my only other question. So let's say it's the weekend, you have a minimum standby of three hours. Let's say there's a callback of one hour, you know, whatever it is. Is it a total of, like, does the one-hour callback eat into the on-call, or can they overlap?
So there's, so standby is its own kind of compensation, right? So that's just holding the phone, so you can impart that, that's an automatic day compensation. Once you're in a callback scenario, that's kind of the window, right? So let's say it's seven PM and we have an issue at the lift station. You're, you get the call, it's an issue, you get the alarm, you, you head in. It takes you, let's just say, three hours, okay? You would compensate that individual who comes in, would compensate an additional three hours times one and a half pay.
Gotcha.
If, if they're, if they're in, in the city working and they get another alarm because the power's going on, they had to go to a different lift station, they're still in the callback window. So if it, let's just say it takes them another hour, they're just, they got the, they're in that callback window. So they would get three plus one for four, right? In a different scenario, similar to that, Saturday, they get in, they leave, they pull in their driveway, they take a shower. Ten minutes later, they get called again because the alarm went off. Then they would be back in a new clock for the callback periods, we'll say. So in theory, you could come back in for thirty minutes and get a full two hours. So each time you're back home and get a call, you can reset. If you're in working and you get a call, then it's just part of the original call.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Seems fair.
Quick question. So like, if somebody has, would you have overtime in that week then?
So this addresses basically, so this addresses, the policy addresses any, like, there could be scheduled work outside of it. So anything outside of the regular forty is at time and a half. Holidays are at two times pay. So if you, if, like, I know the treatment plant's going to have daily check-ins here when we're operating. So if they're scheduled to come in for their rounds, that's scheduled time. That's not part of callback, but that is compensated at time and a half. If you're snow plowing at two in the morning, it's time and a half. We, we've been working full forty-hour weeks for quite a while now, but, so this is, this policy really intended to look at outside of the full forty-hour week. Does that make sense?
I think so. So they would, they would be entitled to overtime then? Like, so if you're on-call and you get a call at eleven o'clock at night, and you work till ten o'clock, you're still going to get paid overtime for those, whatever, four hours from four to ten, or six or nine, or whatever it is? Plus, then you would, then this policy would kick in after they got home at eleven o'clock and had to go back for something?
So if it's scheduled work, that's not considered callback, right? So let's say it's scheduled work rounds on the weekends to look at the plant. That's, that's part of scheduled work. It is compensated, proposed to be compensated at time and a half. Typically, the person that's on standby is going to be the person doing the scheduled work on the weekends because that makes sense, right? And, you know, so in that scenario, I've got my hundred and twenty hours for carrying the phone on Saturday. I'm doing my, call it, two-hour rounds. So I get two hours times time and a half. And then I'm about to get home in the shower and the phone rings. Now I'm in the callback period, and I could be eligible for a two-hour minimum or whatever it takes to do the work. Does that make sense?
Yep.
It depends on kind of like what queue you go into, how you analyze that. And so we'll track all that. It'll have to be monitored by our superintendents. We, we're relying on quality employees to take care of our quality infrastructure, that means a lot. So, you know, I, I think it makes a lot of sense for a community to go this route, but to your point, yeah. It depends on what queue you're in, kind of how it's compensated. But in general, outside of the forty hours, this policy for regular, non-holidays, it's time and a half. For holidays, it's two times, which current policy's two times anyways for holiday.
The nexus for this is the fact that we have so much infrastructure that needs different attention. Since this time last year, we've now added three employees in order to take care of the infrastructure. And truth be known, we probably needed something like this with the way that our employees were responding previously. We just worked at a place to be able to do it. And so to Kevin's point, we're going to be sharing this opportunity across the board. But the primary folks that are going to be carrying it a lot are our utilities team.
Is there, is there a need for like additional vehicles? Or do they have enough vehicles to utilize to do something like this?
We have that all, I mean, we're waiting on a couple new ones that got delayed for two utility folks. But, you know, we've got that accommodated in previous approvals, so no, no additional vehicles.
Okay.
Quick question. The second sentence of this policy reads, "Employees who are on-call must diagnose and respond within fifteen minutes or less." What do you mean by diagnose?
It means sometimes we get like a false call, right? So someone's coughing, and sometimes we get calls from Corcoran, California. So I mean, that's, we get that, but if it's some calls from Corcoran, California, and you diagnose it, like, not wrong number, call weird zip code, you know, six one six. So that's kind of a false call. So that diagnosis period is just, you know, sometimes, sometimes it's more important to recognize and diagnose the situation and call other people in. So some emergencies require getting other people moving to get there. So it's, the diagnosis period is almost more important. There's some of the stuff like with the treatment plant or whatever can be done over the phone. You could talk to residents, shut off the water, and it's good until the next day. So I might not need to rally the troops, right? So that diagnosis period is super important to get everyone there as fast as possible. So, and then so we wanted to highlight that because not, not always do you have to go in to actually solve the problem. And so it gets kind of nuanced, and, you know, we'll be documenting the types of calls and leaning on our team to do that. But I think that's what that's really intended to be, is that diagnosis is more critical than getting in the truck and driving. Because when you're driving, you can't really, you shouldn't be coordinating tech, you know, that type of stuff. So just slowing down, getting, assessing the situation, getting everything moving, and then getting in there is, the diagnosis one is actually more important. So we wanted to highlight that.
Medical terms is triage.
Right.
Do we have like a backup plan too? So like, let's say this never ever happens, but like, something's happening at the water treatment facility, and it's tied to the water tower. Is there like a backup person in case we need two people?
Yeah, and so that's addressed in there. So if you're not standby, you get called in, you're time and a half, and you have a three-hour minimum because it's more of a surprise. We're going to have to lean on our superintendents, and just for folks, Joe, the superintendents are still going to be the relay, right? So if there's a employee that's like, oh, this is, you know, fairly new or I don't know, he should, he's going to be trained to recognize, I got to contact my supervisor, I need this additional assistance. So, you know, that's a primary backup. But we have, you know, sewer or utilities and ops will both have standby people that are ready. And then we have the other people, we're a small team, so everyone, any large event, almost everyone still gets called in individually. We're just really trying to address those, you know, nightly calls in some cases that just, you know, we have to pick up. But we don't want everyone to be burdened waiting for the phone ring. So we're trying to kind of funnel the information through a non-call person. Again, this is very common, you know, reiterating, we're the only one of the seven comparable cities that don't currently have that kind of approach. And so we're not reinventing the wheel. Everyone is a little different, we're customizing it to our needs. So this is, every one of these is not the same. So we just, we took the average and said, hey, this is general, you know, compensation, and this is where we think it best fits our needs.
Definitely the way that the team has operated and will continue to operate is they have each other to back.
No, I think it's really good. I think it's been something that's been in progress for like the last least five years. So it's good to see that it's finally something that's coming to fruition.
Yeah, I think, I think I'd be very much appreciative of our staff. We've leaned on our staff for a long time and capacity, like, and like our peer cities haven't. So I really strongly advocate this consideration tonight. We'll do our best to monitor and keep bringing value to our, to our, you know, customers.
Mayor, can I make a motion to approve?
All right, right ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to approve as Jack presented.
We have a second.
Second.
That is a draw, you get to pick.
Go ahead.
I'll let Mark have it.
All right. Any further discussion?
All right.
All those in favor say aye.
Not that I'm trying to speed it up.
On to nine C, this one should be quick. Watershed Commissioner appointment. Jeremy, Kevin, Lauren and I interviewed a couple interested candidates last week? Oh, this is a little shit. Were you in that? No, you weren't. We talked about it afterwards. It all blends together. But it was good interviews, and Jeremy and I discussed afterwards, and we wanted to, and I'll go ahead and make the motion, to appoint Lauren Evanrude to the Elm Creek Watershed Commission.
A second.
Any further discussion?
He's the resident that's lived here for forty years?
He...
Or is he the one that?
Let me see.
Came in two or three years ago.
I think he's the newer resident. I'm trying to remember what he had on his...
Yes, he is the, he is the newer resident.
What he had on his application.
Three years, Mr. Trump?
Yes.
And just why, why that choice? If I, if I'm, I'm in agreement, but why that choice?
The, they both had different, but kind of, I think, experience that could be applicable. But we thought maybe this, his specific experience was a little more directly tied, that there's going to be a learning curve regardless. But, you know, he, it was a, I don't think it could have gone wrong. Either way, I think it was just he stood up.
Thanks for doing it, you guys, very much.
Of course. Alrighty, so with that, we have a motion and a second. That was the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. And then we are done with major items, staff reports.
So first thing, Mayor and Council, construction on the park will begin next Wednesday. Pretty exciting. This is a clip that is currently on social media, letting everybody know that the park will be closed, except for the areas, those fields that have been identified beginning Wednesday the sixteenth. Also, nineteen nights coming up quick, in case you've forgotten, mark your calendars.
Question, Jay, Mr. Mayor, if I may. On the park's closing, there was somebody on the, on Facebook wanting to know if they could purchase the old playground equipment and stuff.
So staff has to talk about that since I saw that?
Sounds good. You guys saw that? Perfect.
And then with that, one of the things that's been identified in this process as for closing it is unfortunately Emerald Ashbore has attacked like crazy, like terrible. Staff has done a good job finding someone that can remove those trees at a, at a good expense for us, only a hundred and fifty dollars for trees. There's some other things involved, high volume of trees. So we're up with over thirty in the park. And then we have additional trees that are adjacent on the property that we purchased last year. So that fence will be coming down and those trees will be coming out. So a lot of trees, and we got a good deal on it. I don't think we have anything dead on that, Kevin?
No, I think we're going to recommend, like, authorize that work to go through and figure out a way to pay for it. It's between those two, I think it's...
It'll be within my authorization.
Yeah, it'll be like sixteen thousand, but high value, like I said, and that includes disposable, something that we couldn't self-perform, so we wanted to...
Are we doing a bond car?
I don't know how they're going to dispose of it. As of right now, they cut them up, they grind the stumps, and they haul them away.
Never mind.
So it's high value, unfortunately, it's going to look a lot different, but if you haven't been out there, it's...
I would, I would have bought Mark Nelson or Hushy Barres and Grand Packers if we were doing something.
Two quick things. One is, I believe, Met Council and/or the state has a program for some funding for this type of removal.
There is a grant. I was going to suggest the same thing.
Okay. I'll, I'll double check on the, on the language on that. I think the fact that this is, they're cutting all the trees down next Wednesday. I don't know that we'll be able to apply for a grant sometime.
No, for that one, but like for future grants, and it also applies to residents in your city too.
Oh, that's helpful. This might be a good opportunity for us to educate on that.
And then the other thing is, for, you know, you were talking about how it might look a little different with all the removals. I believe we have in our, one of our policies about landscaping on new developments when they can't fit on the site, that they can go to another, basically they can be...
Maybe we can give them to plant trees there?
Yeah.
There you go, good idea.
Yeah, we'll talk about that next week. And then next one, I remember we were having the photo contest for what to put on the wall behind me. And the winners are, these are our three winners. So Lindsay allowed us with the Shuddy Farm. Second place was Leslie, the nineteen oh-seven barn, and the serene view at home from Anna. So these are the three pictures that, uh, the public voted on and selected, and they will be, uh, printed and placed on the wall behind me by the next council meeting.
That, that second picture looks awful familiar.
So, uh, that's...
Great choices, everybody. Good job, public. Public did the voting, right?
They did.
Great job.
Uh, so, so that's, with that, uh, I have two more things for you. One, we have the opportunity, uh, Continental reached out to me and, uh, we're going to be meeting with them next week. They're having a difficult time trying to meet council's guidance on finding a commercial, uh, retail partner because of what's happened with the market. And so they have actually gone out and they've engaged someone to do a market rate study on their property. And then they reached out to me, and this might be an opportunity for the city to save some money since they're paying for part of it. If you recall, we were talking about examining that corridor on what we could do, uh, because we've had some challenges trying to do this. So if they're going to do, our last market rate study for that area was in two thousand and eight. And so our understanding of how the market worked in two thousand and eight is way different than how it works in two thousand and twenty-five. And this is something that we would want to do as part of the comp plan anyways. So doing this work now and having somebody else pay for part of it, uh, it's a good opportunity. But I don't know what it's going to cost yet. I just wanted you to be aware that we're meeting with them next week to see if this is an opportunity for us to...
Cool.
To see. Uh, the last thing is, I followed up, uh, on the guidance that you've given us. And, uh, our Director of Public Safety and I have been meeting with our fire service partners. And we met with two of them today and we'll be meeting with one on Monday. Made them aware that, um, that our space needs study is out and gauging their interest in, uh, on the civic campus for filling a fire service space. So it was a really productive conversation today. We're having the same conversation with each of them to see how they're interested in. Uh, they will also all be at the work session on the twenty-fourth, uh, so that was one thing. And then the thing that I do need guidance from council on is I have heard from, uh, fire chiefs that there's been interest to them, uh, from some council members to attend the quarterly fire meetings. Uh, the concern that I have and that they may have is if we have more than two council members at a meeting, we have to public notice it or we violate the open meeting law. And so I wanted to get some guidance on how you want to handle meeting attendance. Uh, historically, um, my understanding is it's been one or two ways. We've had a fire service committee, which we can discuss on the twenty-fourth during the work session. Or for the last probably year and a half, it's been the public service, our public safety director and the mayor. And so on the twenty-fourth, uh, hoping to get some clear guidance on what you want to do with that. But if we have two or more, please let me know if you're going to, because we do have to provide public notice.
Yep.
The other thing we could do would be like, uh, like we do for interviews for commissioners, like rotating me and council members.
Quarterly meetings?
Yeah, something like that.
Um, and one of the concerns that came up as I was talking with them, uh, is how some of their other partners will respond if they find out that we have two or three council members attending. Are the other cities also going to, and then it becomes a really hard to manage meeting.
Stand out if we have more than two. I've never seen, typically it's just the mayor, um, and staff. Occasionally it will be another council member in place of the mayor and maybe one or two times as bad a council member and a mayor, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Never thought I'd ask. It'd be excuse to go to the rodeo. My rights. Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Got to have priorities. We're good.
Have fun.
Thanks, Andy.
Have fun.
Good on it. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
I got these all fish once in four weeks.
So, yeah, I would just...
So I'll bring it back. Uh, when, when we meet on the twenty-fourth, uh, we, we can talk more if you want to think about it more. But, but I do need to get some guidance on that so that we don't unintentionally violate the open meeting law.
How much effort is it to issue a notification? Is that a lot of work to do?
It's not a lot of work, but the timing of it is what's critical.
Okay, alright.
And...
I think the point that Jay made about how the other cities may react is maybe the bigger issue because I feel like...
So, so I only experienced it once, uh, so I don't go to the council meetings because I recognize that we were having too many people there. So our public safety director goes and, and then he backbriefs me. And when we, when they were talking about some of the mergers going on and, and there was some specific districting, those meetings got pretty crazy.
Yes, they did.
Uh, so, so the mayor was attending remotely and some cities had as many as five people there. And it just, the meeting was...
It was just strictly a nightmare.
Not great.
Yeah.
Because it's supposed to be just an update. Uh, they, they send us the quarterly report. It's not even supposed to be that kind of exchange. It's supposed to be informational exchange. So that's, that's just my request, is that we know so we don't unintentionally violate the open meeting law.
Sounds good.
That's all from staff.
Looking for another one? There's only three left now. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Anyone else?
Our work session starts at five.
Five. Okay. I'll write that down because I definitely have five-thirty in my calendar. Anything from council? Other than we got rodeo going on, obviously, and Country Day's coming up and...
Night to Unite before that?
Uh, that's what I meant, actually, and then Country Day. And then, uh, in between there, actually, there's Birchville...
Oh, yeah.
Schoolhouse, uh, Summer Fest.
Yep.
On the tenth, I believe it is. And then in September, we have Bark in the Park. So question with the park closing?
I don't have an answer about Bark in the Park yet.
Okay.
That, that has been a discussion.
Be determined.
Uh, there's been some recommendations, but I don't know what they landed yet.
Sounds good. Worst case, we can do it at my house. I already got two. Alrighty, um...
That could be pretty rough.
But, um, shh, rough. He'll be here all week. With that, we've got our city council schedule on there. Obviously, living document can change, but we got, we got coming up. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.